This conference will now be recorded.
It's 5:30 this morning to start a meeting. Uh, roll call please.
Mr. Mason?
Present.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mr. Stover?
Here.
Mr. Tewey? Mayor Warren?
Here.
If you want to participate in open hearing, please just please stand.
I pray our father, our hearts are rejoiced for the goodness that you've brought our way each day. We're thankful for the opportunity to be here. We're thankful that we live in this favored land. We, we do pause to remember those on the east coast who are suffering and have lost so much. I pray that you be real to them and meet their needs. Back here at home, we're thankful for this evening. We pray that you bless our commission. They have some things to consider. I pray that you be with each one that is here. We thank for their participation. We pray that you bless them. Much over all of our staff, our citizens, and we just thank you and ask you to guide and direct in all things this evening in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. What a nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any addition or relations to the agenda?
There's not. The question that we approve, no additions or relations to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, the move is second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries. Need a motion for approval of the agenda.
Same move.
Second.
Okay, move is second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda. There's only one thing on the consent agenda, and that's the minutes of the September 13th, 2024 spatial beating and September 17th, 2024 regular meeting is written.
I think we approved the consent agenda as written.
Second. Hey, it's been moved second. Any discussion on it? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Public hearing.
Well, the public hearing and considers a resolution declaring the structure located at 426 South Summit Street as unsafe and dangerous and directing that said structure to be repaired, restored, or in the alternative demolished. Building official and neighborhood service director Mike Bellis is here to talk about this.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, city commissioners. This is to have the hearing for 426 South Summit Street, more commonly known as the Townhouse Motel. It is a dangerous structure.
I turn on my tone.
Okay, this is the information on it. I did do some checking on the property too. The 24th taxes on the building is $43,600. What's the value of the building now? The land is valued at $20,790. Makes the total of $64,430 is the value of the property. They are behind on taxes for the year 23. And this case started on eighth month, November 21st.
Now they're behind on the water bill too, aren't they?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've got some pictures here for you. There is the overview of the property. As you can see, there's numerous doors open. It's unsecure right through there. That is the townhouse suites. It's unsecure. It's wide open right off of Summit Street there. That picture right there on that beam, you can see it was repaired. And the next picture is now showing underneath part of that beam. That's basically holding up the walkway on the second floor. So they just, that's brick up in there. They put in there for filler. Very unsecure on that. There's another picture of it. This is looking down the hallway inside the building. Right there on the suites part is broken too. As you can tell, broken glass on the floor. This is on the avenue there on the south side of the building.
And that's underneath that, that's the cabin.
Yeah.
The cabin, yeah.
Yeah, that's where the bar, all that used to be. I barely remember it. This is a picture of the east wall there. As you can tell, it is bowled out. It is listing to the east. So it is unsecure there. People want to say unsecure. This is underneath the parking lot. That is a basement underneath there. Those are what we call straws coming out of the cement. And the only reason you get straws coming around the cement that are like that from those cracks is it's leaking from the top down. Anywhere you see the rust colored straws right there, that means it's in contact with the bar. There's another picture of the two straws there. And that one beam is bad. Here again, that's the area I took the picture from. It was wide open. So it's unsecure too. People can get in there. I did give you all the documentation from the structural engineer that looked at the place. And he even said that it was, it was a dangerous structure. It shouldn't be occupied at all. The parking lot, I actually asked him, I said, you think it would hold a backhoe to build short-term? He goes, no. How about a car? He said, no. And it's in very bad shape, but it's a blight to the community too. The last time I talked to the property owner, we had no response. And no call back or anything on it.
Okay. It's three months ago then, right about three months ago.
Almost four. About three months. That was to notable. That was structural engineer looked at the property. I sent him the notification from the structural engineer too.
Okay.
Any questions?
Well, I make a motion. We move to a public hearing regarding the structure of 426 South Summit Street.
Second.
Second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there anybody for the audience wants to come up and talk about this structure? It's a public hearing. Okay. If not, I close this. Make a motion. We close the public hearing.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any questions from the commission?
No.
Okay. Well, I make the motion, a public hearing, consider a resolution declaring the structure located at 426 South Summit Street as unsafe and dangerous and directing that said structure be repaired or restored or totally abolished.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved second. Any discussion on that?
That's fine. I just want to make sure.
We all right? Okay, has the motion a second? Any other discussion on it? Not all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
So it'll take, you'll go, you'll take 90 days, or you're going to give them 30 days. 90 days complete. If they don't, then what happens?
Well, they have 30 days from the date of publication of the paper to come forward and start to work on or get a permit, whatever, which will be at my discretion. And then they have 90 more days to do that. And then after that, if they don't do anything to the property, then we can demolish, take it down.
Okay. And then move.
Oh, maybe don't let him give them permission to do anything because I think they've had it. How many years?
Yeah.
Good going.
Just between us and nobody else, I won't give up.
Thank you.
Get in here later.
Okay, new business number one.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
City manager apartment. Item number one is review and discuss preliminary renovation plans for the Arkansas City Fire Station along with financing options as presented by Rington Financial.
So we'll have a couple of presentations tonight. The first one is Nick and Chief Kathy, we've been working with Agora Architecture out of Winfield for six months to a year now on, on designs and plans to create the existing fire station. As we all know, it's in pretty tough shape. The plumbing and electrical, it's got some issues along with just, it's just hasn't been touched. It's probably 40 years. And then, so then after that, we invited our financial advisor Larry Kleeman in to discuss what kind of financial options that we have as far as financing with PVC bonds and those types of things that we will, we do have, the bonds being paid off this year. And so we'll have, I think we budgeted $450,000 for 2025 to make bond payments. So we have some ability to, to jump into PVC bonds. So with that, I'll let Chief and Nick just kind of talk about.
He's been, he's been busy all day. Good evening. So anyway, like I said, we have been working on that quite a bit when we were looking at, at the station itself. We actually, if you guys ever want to see, we do have some of the original plans of what that station was when it was still in the armory. Really, the only thing that was ever truly done or knocked the wall out was where the kitchen was, was redone, where you guys have seen that. The single pane windows that are in there, the electrical problems that we have, the plumbing issues that are there, the building at this point in time, we sit on a really nice area. We're out of the way. We do a lot of the training that's there. You're not going to find a one block long building and three quarter block wide. It's got good structure. It's good bones. It just needs some TLC. It really does. And so we tried to pick the easiest way we could. I have been in, in contact with other chiefs as well. I talked to Chad Russell, which is one of the presidents of the Chiefs Association. They just built a station over and and over. His total cost was actually six. For his brand new station that they built was $6,514,985. That was for a station that was.
That was ground up.
That's ground up. 15,000.
15.
So if we're looking at a cost from Conoco, which one of the bids that came in was 6.3 million or we, and we could still go out, he actually got me in touch with Crossland Construction as well. One of the issues that we had when, when I was talking with Crossland, when I was in contact with him up there with Chad, was construction companies have a really hard time giving hard bids out when they haven't been fully involved in it. Architecture is doing a really nice job, painting really dirty pictures. But when it actually comes to the construction side of it, that's where we start having details. I don't think we're going to have near that issue because we're not talking about a brand new building being constructed. We're talking about one that's going to be remodeled. So by doing that, and actually we have some pictures. Do you have those pictures? Did you, everybody's got to see what the plans were, correct?
Yeah, we got public here. We need to show public. So everybody knows what we're talking about.
Yes. Yep. Absolutely.
Love blue skies.
Yeah, beautiful, beautiful blue skies. So what we wanted, we told Agora if they wouldn't mind to at least kind of do kind of a drawing of what we might consider the outside of the departmental loop. We did a number of different things on the front portion of the structure, trying to make it ADA compliant. They did come up with, this was actually the easiest way to go about making it ADA compliant without, and actually lower the cost on it. The front blast that's right there, I mean, that's, we do have some antique, we do have two antique trucks and no place to put them, but they are taking up base space floor. So by putting that out there, we kind of make someone a museum. But the thought process behind it was if the railroad does decide that we are going to start getting people coming through, and that's a drop off point, it would be really nice to have something that people looked at that we're proud of. And so by going to the next one, and I thought the board did a really nice job of making a pretty decent picture on that. The only. Oh, that's all right. That's all right. The biggest change that we were looking at. So the majority of everything that's sitting right here is still within, and we don't have load bearing walls in this building. This building is still construction. So most of what we see right here is just going in, knocking out some walls, putting new walls up. The only thing we actually added, that would be added to the structure itself, we're moving everybody from where we had an area where, if you guys remember, the, the water conditions, the mold conditions and everything else. So we literally had moved everybody over to a clean area. By doing individual rooms instead of one big room is kind of nice because now you're not counting the beds as somebody gets sick and then counting the days that you're going to catch that too. So giving the individual rooms, keeping it clean, so on, so forth. So there's 11 sleeping quarters that are there. So you'll have your own. It's what we call a hot bunk. So three individuals, one from each shift, they'll be sharing that room. So when you come in in the morning.
Dimensions on those rooms, 10 by 10?
You go to the other slide. I think, I think it had dimensions on it.
Oh, boy.
You got 11 and a half, or I'm sorry, I put five and a half. And width wise, see if I can find one.
It looks pretty square. I'd go 11 by and a half by 11 and a half.
Yeah, somewhere in there. So it's, it's decent. Again, you're not spending all your time in there. It's basically a place where we would be able to give three lockers and, and a desk. So if you want to study where it's nice and quiet, you have a place to be able to do that. You have a locker in the bedroom so you can keep your gear there, your extra, your bedding. And if you have an extra set of clothes that you want in there, or even your workout clothes. So by doing that, we gave men's restrooms, women's restrooms. What it did do was it gave us a mezzanine on the top side here so that if we needed to put in extra storage, we could build a building on top of that. So a lot of times we get, when COVID came out, we had a bunch of boxes of masks, but we have no place to store those. So we put them up on top of things where we kind of get in trouble when, when people come in because it's a unsecured location. So it gives us plenty of room. Plus we have a place right there where we could train in-house even by doing bailouts. The dining room with the three pantries that are right there and the kitchen would give a place for them to eat. And then of course, we obviously have a day room. And then the outdoor area where they can enjoy during the summertime or even the wintertime, a place where they could actually go outside and enjoy. We did cover it. We have had issues in the past.
Be on the north side?
Yes, sir. This would be on the north side. The reason why we did the outdoor area is we, we have had issues in the past with multiple different departments. You talk to them, people drive by, they don't see you, you know, doing training or working even though it's six o'clock, seven o'clock, and you're trying to just sit back and enjoy your day. People get upset. So this way they're kind of out of sight, out of mind. They're right there in an area that's controlled so they can enjoy their day too. And I hate saying that, but I mean.
It's the same.
Truth, we, we literally, I mean, I had to deal with it even when I was at Winfield. We had the park bench out there in front. People don't like it when you're not always busy, but people also don't always understand that if we're busy, it's somebody's bad day. You know, if we're not busy, it's somebody's good day. Town's good day. Going on to the other side over here, what we did create was we have our maintenance shop right here, our compressor. We ended up making our own electrical closet. So instead of having fuse box, fuse box, fuse box, multiple fuse boxes, fuse box, fuse box, it's all in one spot. And that way, if there's an issue, we can get to it. The one big thing we did add on there was the decon room all the way over to the side. We do end up with some nasty calls, and those are things that we don't want to bring in. One of the issues that we've had consistently is bedbugs. The guys go out, they'll make a call, they come in, and then the ambulance is now in the bay. Now we're deconning everything. So instead of having them come into the bay, we can literally be outside, decon the ambulance, decon the clothes, because we have an area right there, washer, dryer, that we could do all that stuff right there instead of spreading that through the interior. So, but you know, windows need to be updated. We're single panes. I mean, we lose more heat and air. The heating and air that we have in there, you guys have been in there, the single, you know, gas heaters which completely waste, you know, gas. So even our electric and our gas bills are just, I mean, we're paying quite a bit more and trying to keep the place cooler place. We added the fans, which was nice. That's kind of cut down quite a bit where we have some airflow going through there. But yeah, just getting that TLC. So again, the other portion of this is we're not looking at trying to build a whole new station because I don't think we can afford that at all, not, not this size. But if we do the remodel and we start planning for maintenance, not the guys there, but actually plan for maintenance of somebody coming in, that's a professional painter every eight or nine years, we can plan to budget those things and keep the building looking nice. We can plan on them coming in and caulking the windows when they need to so we don't end up with the same problems. But if we keep the maintenance on the building, we might be looking at 50, 75 years that the building will maintain and still look nice.
Yeah, well, you don't do nothing for 40, 50 years. You got what we got right now.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And, and that's, I mean, we know that. We know that by our own homes. If I don't do any maintenance on my house, it's going to fall apart. So if we plan on something, of course, we just, basically we're at a point right now where we don't have a choice. We have to do something to it. And if we do something to it, then it's the plan of trying to maintain that instead of letting it fall apart. And that's, it's more beneficial to.
If you bump that out, are we going to lose space for vehicles?
Yes, we will take base space, but you've been there before as well. Most of our first out units, which we have not changed anything, most of our first out units are on the south end anyways. We have two antiques that sit here which take up base space. We have the MR boat that takes up the base space, which the MR would end up down here and our grass rig up there. So literally the only thing we have back here is going to be those grass rigs, the six buoys and so on and so forth. So we have plenty of space to be able to do what we need to, which was nice about having that size of a building and what the equipment that we need. So yes, we will lose space rates, but it's base space we can afford to lose. Talking about, you know, even the substation, you know, we're supposed to be getting that tangent coming in that we've been waiting on. The puck that we have right now, you're not going to get the money back out if you go out and outright sell it. But for our ratings and insurance and ISO, we can actually get a better rating because we keep that truck. We use it for training. It is a backup truck. It still works. The maintenance is still there. Why would we get rid of it and not get anything back out of it when we can actually use it for the training side of it? If we keep our, our vehicles in it, then we don't have room. So by adding that, you know, training area, the 40 by 100 building, it gives us a place to go ahead and put that where we're going to be training anyways.
You're talking about across from the center shop?
Yes, yes, yep, right there where we have, where we're still putting things together. So even with the ambulance, doing the, the driver's training between the ambulance and the tanker, so we have three vehicles right now that we could literally put over there and use for training that entire time. Plus, the nice thing about that is if we're using that vehicle, we're not taking equipment off of our first out engine. So if we get a call, I'm not having to put everything back on the truck and then go to the call. Our engine stays the same no matter what. It's parked out there, but the, the apparatus that we have sitting out there right now is made for the training. So we, if we need to dump and go, we don't have to worry about it. So some of the things, and I'll, I'll let Larry have it. Some of the things we were talking about were soft cost, and I wasn't, really didn't have a good idea until I went over and started talking to some of the other chiefs. And Chad was really good about telling me about that. When we talk about soft cost, even though the pilli might cost us 6.3, and I'm just saying that because that's what Conoco did.
Think that's high now, probably.
Well, hopefully it's not. If we went over that, those are prices, soft cost being the price for Agora. And I didn't think about any of that until talking with the other chiefs that says, no, that's, that's literally the price for your architecture is what goes into that soft cost plan. The building could be a portion of that soft cost. If we're looking at 7 point. What was that?
7.3.
7.1?
3.
The 7.3 if it comes in, let's say we do have $90,000 over when we pulled that bond, that, that $1 million over is what we afford with the soft cost. So the building that we need for the training grounds, the new alerting system that needs to be done. Dad, you remember the alerting system that's over there in the station and how that works? I think sports music was the one that put that in. So really, nobody has actually ever done anything or put an alerting system in correctly. When we go to the separated rooms, each room is going to have to have some type of alerting system. So we did get ahold of a company that actually did andovers. What they're trying to do now is stay away from the bright white lights coming on in an instant and that really loud tone, which again, starts your heart like a rabbit. And then if you don't have anything, you're trying to get rid of that adrenaline rush. What they do now is they kind of do red light systems. So instead of losing that night vision, we have red lights that come on. And then the tones go from a dull to a high peak, and it comes up gradually instead of just hammering your heart. So by going with a company that actually does this, and that's what they're supposed to be doing, helps us out. I mean, health wise, it gives us a little bit of longevity instead of just kickstarting the heart like you're on drugs. So, so there's little things like that, that, that we started looking at at the soft cost. Our extractor machine is, is quite a bit out of date, and we don't have a drying cabinet. So when the guys go in there and they wash their gear, the gear now sits out there and until it's dry, then they have to put it all back together. The drying cabinets are out there, and actually there's more expensive ones, but when Nick and I were looking at that, for the extractor and the drying cabinets, $20,000. So by incorporating that into that soft cost, we can actually start upgrading some of the things that are within that building as well, instead of trying to come up with those costs afterwards, spend a bunch of money that we really, I mean, citizens have to come up with later on. Let's just be honest. So, and that's for all of us. So do it now, get it all done, you know, eat that bullet or, you know, just kind of drag it out to where hopefully it doesn't ever get forgotten. With that, do you guys have any questions on my end? If not, I'm a.
On the bays, the concrete, is the trucks have settled the tanks? Has that all been remedied?
So we never have gotten something, the only spot we have that we've noticed and we don't know where the water went to was right over here on this pillar. We have yet to be able to find somebody to come out and take a look at that. At one point in time, they talked about, what's the company that does the foam? Foam, the foam raising. They talked about them coming in and doing that, but honestly, our trucks are still on there. We haven't fallen through yet. You know what I mean? So, I mean, if I, if I have something that's completely collapsed in there, I think we would have known by now. Do we have a tunnel that's running through there? Who knows? I mean, unless I get somebody to actually come in, but everybody we call, nobody's called back. So that's a, that's a guessing game as, as much as it is, but I mean, that's.
And that's, that's a concern for me.
It is.
Because I'm, like I said, I'm the only one here. I, I wash cattle and stuff there. I know there's drains that's going underneath there somewhere. Have they collapsed? And that's what's causing our problem.
100% I agree with you. It is a huge concern that we put money into here and then end up with a major issue, you know? But what's, what's the other option? And that's, that's, I'm trying to weigh that to, do we try to build a new station that we can't afford and not have the footprint we have? Or, I mean, for that matter, the thrashers, this is what I was thinking of. Have thrashers come in and take a peek at it and go ahead and put some foam underneath there, but the building's been existent for how long?
Well, I know over 70 years. I'm trying, I'm trying.
Not, not trying to point any fingers, but.
This way, I was eight years old when I first went to the building and it'd been there somewhere.
And that being an armory and the trucks have run here.
What's your age?
Not supposed to have that.
55.
35 years young, but, but yeah, so it is a concern. It really is. I'm going off the fact that we have not collapsed anything yet.
My question is, considering it is a steel structure, has that been looked into to be sure?
It's not rusting out.
It's not rusting out in spots that we don't know about.
No. Now, there has been, I think along with that, Nick, didn't we have engineers come through there?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm, I'm going to go with the engineers at least look at it.
From my understanding, they did, but it's no different than any type of construction. You won't know truly until you start opening up. So at that point, we'll just fingers crossed and be prepared as much as we can.
Yeah, the majority of the steel structure that's in there is all steel IB. I mean, it's, it's put together very well. As a matter of fact, that's part of our cost, you know, when we have to end up being ADA compliant, then we have to bring everything up to code. But that bottom section where you see the stripes on the line are actually a portion of tornado shelter. So that's, that's one hit that we always end up taking. Anytime you start doing a remodel, you have to bring everything back up to code.
What do you got, Nick, on?
We're going to let Larry talk about the bond issue.
Yeah, as Randy mentioned, Larry Kleeman of Rinson Financial, financial advisor. We've helped you guys issue bonds on a number of occasions. And just put together some rough numbers here. We were talking, let's see, staff, a couple weeks ago. For an estimated $7 million size, and some of these are kind of conservative numbers. I'm looking at the page of the little table at the very top. That just has some estimated debt service numbers. So assuming a $7 million cost of a project, adding on about $240,000 for cost of issuing bonds, that might be a little high, a little. So assuming a seven million dollar cost of a project, adding on about two hundred and forty thousand for cost of issuing bonds, that might be a little high, a little conservative. You can see with annual debt services over twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, based on some recent interest rates, actually about a month old interest rates. So for example, twenty-five years is about four and fifty-five thousand. You know, Randy mentioned you have some debt coming off and annual debt service, which is about that amount. And again, rates are starting to go down. So in a few months, when you maybe give this a green light or not, rates may be even lower and debt service estimates would be even lower. But the traditional way of doing this to keep it off of the, the state debt limit of the city is to use PBC, Public Building Commission Revenue Bonds. We've done that many times in the past. That's typically how a lot of public facility projects are financed in cities, just to keep it from affecting your debt limit. So you preserve that debt for the future. On the backside, just a sample schedule, just a few highlighted areas there. I mean, issuing bonds is a pretty quick two-step process to mission meetings, a couple of months apart. So we can get documents together, get it rated, take bids. But probably the key thing is to figure out, you know, you want to greenlight this project. If you, if you're taking bids or if you're wanting to get comfortable with a number, we can go ahead and issue bonds if you want to proceed. And take competitive bids for various underwriters at that time and see what the best interest rate is. I know a number of you have probably been through the process with this first times issuing a bond. But again, the numbers on the back are conservative.
Conservative meaning that, that we can get underneath them.
Well, okay, interest rate.
The way I think conservative, I'm thinking you're saying seven million, but we're actually going to spend ten.
Yeah. Hey, number always look at it. I'm not really talking about the project cost. Hopefully your project is under seven million. But I'm talking about interest rates that I have plugged in here, quarter, quarter, quarter percent. I'm expecting rates to start trending down, which will lower that annual rate.
Right, right.
That's what I'm talking about for the most part.
I just want to make sure we understand.
Yeah. Have we answered any questions on that or continue to discuss?
We got a lot of discussion to work on that thing. What I want to bring out, you know, our water plant, our wastewater plant, it was on design build, you know? And that may be something we might want, I'm just talking out loud, might want to consider because it's already, we already know what the structure is, you know, pretty much, you know, type thing. It's not, you know, of course, the water plant was built, you know, brand new, but it was designed built. We stayed over like one and a half million dollars, you know, on edge. So I'm just.
That's why we're looking at it.
Yeah, I think we ought to at least, you know, look into it. What do you think, Randy?
Yeah, no, I do too. I don't, I don't think we should leave any of those options off the table. I guess I kind of look at this as probably our worst case scenario. Number wise, I think we can only do better. So I, I guess tonight we were just looking to present to you what we've been working on, what, what they've come up with on design, what they feel they need. And the financial options and just, do you want us to move forward with getting more details and figuring this out? Bring a project back to you or what, what do you guys want to see is what we're.
Well, I think we ought, this is my personal feeling that I think we need to consider going forward because, you know, it's a fifty year old building or whatever. It hadn't been touched. And, you know, for us, if you go out and recruit, you know, firemen or EMS, it's going to be hard to do with a building like that. I mean, it's just, it's, you know.
Unbrainer to me.
Yeah, it is.
We need to be looking.
And I agree because we got to know what we're written with. I mean, I don't, I don't want to spend seven million dollars, but we don't know what we can cut and what we can get down to unless we're going to go forward and look at it. So I think we need to do that.
What do you think, Diane?
I'm just with the rest of you. I'm the only person here. I know it needs to be fixed.
How many years was it?
Just keep on here.
Well, hopefully, go ahead.
Boy, it holds for nineteen twenty-five. No, thank you. But we're on the topic of fire station and the people, I don't know what they've done. So this is just for, for your information. Federal Emergency Management Agency has a program called Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. That program is eligible to apply for because we had a winter storm. That funds go into a pool so you can apply for Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. It won't do your seven billion, but it might do part if you apply through the state to get that money. If you're thinking about building a new fire station, I mentioned this to your previous fire chief. That if you build a new facility, there is, at my last understanding, a million dollars available. If you build the building and make an emergency operations center in it. So there's that kind of funding as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your information.
Well, we just got a lot of discussion. We're, we're going to move forward on it.
We're going to go forward.
Yeah.
What is it you guys would like to see from us, if I might ask? But are you anything different or anything else we could be working on in the process of this or?
I think it's a pretty basic bill. I don't think you've gone overboard anywhere here. I think it's pretty basic. I think it's, it's a good, modest plan.
We just got to figure out where.
It's an expensive price, Steve, but go ahead.
Yeah, but can I ask one thing?
Absolutely.
Mr. Spelman brought up about that. I don't like that seven million, period.
Sure.
But I sure don't like it if you may have underlying structural issues. The fact the chief has had trouble getting somebody out there puzzles me. Underground radar. I mean, there's, there are several ways I would think that you could get somebody down here and roll.
I think Steve makes a good point. I think we probably need to.
Oh, yeah.
Get that at least looked into before we, before we go too much further. You know, you're right.
We'll, we'll make some more phone calls, see if we can find some more people that might have that, you know, they could do.
Yeah, because for us, it's been five, six, seven million dollars. I'm just talking out loud. We need to find out if that's going to be a problem. Because if it is, it could be an expensive thing.
And then get a five hundred thousand dollar truck that runs over. Eight hundred eighty thousand dollars. Okay.
We don't want to wreck it either. What I'll do is I'll go ahead and start making some more phone calls, see if I can't find somebody else, try to keep plugging away.
They do that radar thing. They can find out if there's void in that concrete or underneath there, you know?
There was a company.
Well, Coon did that.
Coon hired a company out of Wichita to come in and do the.
Yeah. Yeah, did the pool. That's what we need to do is get that radar guy come in, take a look at it from there. And if there's a void, then, then we're going to figure out what we're after that too.
This would be done in phase.
Good point.
So we'll, we'll get on that.
Yeah. But I still think we need to look at design build, you know, because I think it would be a lot of big savings.
You can do both at the same time.
Yeah, right. Got a plan.
All right, thanks. Okay, number two.
In order to modify Municipal Code Part Two, Chapter fourteen, concerning the composition of the Building Trades Board and amending Municipal Codes to the.
This was the, this is the first one, is it the?
That we, how we wrote the resolution or the ordinance, sorry.
To go from six to, or eight to six.
From nine to seven.
Nine to seven. I knew there was two we're losing.
We had a meeting a week ago, two weeks ago, Thursday, the trades board did. And they voted on reducing the membership from nine down to seven. It'll be two tradesmen of each one, electrical plumbing, HVAC, and then one member of the launch. Right now we have nine and we have the seven show up. It's the eighth and ninth one that hardly ever shows up. We would like to reduce that down to seven members.
Sometimes you can overboard, you know, those positions. And I think that's been the problem for some time, being too many people on there and not, not everybody showing up.
And I know we talked about it, but I want to make it clear, you know, as public that you guys are meeting four times a year right now?
Four times a year.
And they're wanting to move it down to one with the option, with moving, with the option of, if you guys need an emergency meeting or anything like that, that can be called at any time.
Yeah, move it down to one meeting a year. And the reason for that is we've had meetings before that's lasted three minutes, just open it and close it. And some of the guys are getting a little bit hurt about that, taking away from their family time, which I understand that.
No sense having a meeting just for a meeting.
Absolutely.
Knock these down to once a month.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we modify Municipal Code Part Two, Chapter fourteen, concerning the composition of the Building Trades Board. Amending the Municipal Code to so we.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Any other discussion on it before we will call move? Okay, real call move.
Commissioner Beasley?
Yes.
Commissioner Stover?
Yes.
Commissioner Stover?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number three.
A resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to enter into an agreement for engineer design services with professional engineering consultants. The CCLIP Surface Preservation Grant Project on West Madison Avenue from Ark River Bridge to Eighth Street. For an amount not to exceed sixty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
So recently, the city was awarded a CCLIP grant for a building overlay on West Madison from Eighth Street to the bridge. Within the design, they would also offer survey services, which would include construction, sequency plan. So this would just allow us to continue moving forward, which we plan on starting in twenty twenty-five, once we receive all the bids and complete this project out.
Now, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing City of Arkansas City to enter into a agreement of engineer design services. With PEC for the CCLIP Surface Preservation Grant Project on West Madison Avenue, US Highway one sixty-six. From Ark River Bridge to Eighth Street for an amount not to exceed six hundred, whoops, sixty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Thanks, move to second. Any other discussion on it? I think it's a great deal for us. Long overdue. It's a voice vote. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Environmental Service Department, number one.
A resolution authorizing agreement with professional engineering consultants to provide survey, design, engineering, and construction administration services in assist. With the SRF loan procurement for the East Pressure Zone High Service Pump Station Rehabilitation Project. An amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Good job, Samuel. Yeah, as we all know, we've always had trouble out in East Pressure Zone. By the way, I understand that when that was annexed in the late eighties, existing.
Might talk this a little bit louder so people hear me.
AC came up on you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, Chestnut Booster Station with that hydrodynamic tank to pressurize these pressures up. Decided the Walnut River was put in an eighty-eight temporary until we got a tower out east. So this is going to look good.
Temporary for forty years.
Yeah. So, so anyway, this is a improvement that should have been made a long time.
Well, you know, people have been gripe about that because they're paying their taxes out there, everything else, but they haven't gotten nothing.
Well, and their insurance is high too, because they've got to, they've got to get certain fire insurance.
This is going to improve fire protection. It'll let us do better maintenance too. There's a lot of small lines out there, but, but we've never been able to really flush those when we need to. And so that'd be the proof that we'll do once we get all this in place. Because we'll be out there flushing and trying to get the capacity back and all, all those lines out there and get them in better shape.
A lot more pressure out there.
Yeah, better shape, better water.
Yeah.
And more volume. So if we can get the capacity back or volume, and then along with feature pipeline replacement projects out there. So anyway, it's, there are questions on what we're planning on doing. We're, we're actually going to redo the pump station. We'll rehab the ground storage tank that, that, those pumps suction out of. And put in the, the piping from pump station underneath the Walnut River to the new tower. And then, then on the south end, there's twelve inch already stubbed out. And the other line going to the Walnut River. So we'll have redundant lines to feed that out there in case anything happens.
Yeah, there could be a lot of expansion out there, you know, putting more homes, building stuff. So we should get more water out there and pressure stuff.
Oh, yeah. Water, water drives the future.
You're supposed to say that. You're the director of water. No, you're, you're correct.
Well, you know, this has been forty, fifty years past too. That being said, I make a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Professionals Engineering Consultants, PEC, to provide survey, design, engineering, construction, administration services in assist. SRF loan procurements for the East Pressure Zone High Service Pump Station Rehabilitation Project. For an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Second.
And move to second. Any other discussion on it?
Is this budgeted or is this something that's going to come out of our new type of water?
So, so it is, it is budgeted for the twenty twenty-five budget. There will be a pump for an SRF loan and then the new water rate structures.
Now, this is the engineering and then when, when that's done, we'll have financing to do actual constructions.
And we figured that construction take, I know I asked you in that work session and I can't remember what it was now.
You know, it's actually been two years.
So it's going to be something that's, it's not just going to be something we're talking about for the next ten years while we're doing it. You'll see it fairly quickly.
Yeah.
Which is important.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor and a second. Any other discussion on that? If not, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Rod. Leave it in, Rod. That city manager updates.
So that's a big thing for staff and, and hopefully our citizens didn't notice it the last week and a half. But on September twenty-second, the city's water treatment plant was hit with a cyber attack. It, it basically disabled the SCADA system, which is the automated system that runs the plant and all the things that come and go with the plant, the wells and. All the pump stations and all those different things. So it was discovered Sunday morning about five thirty or so. Staff was able to get out there and they, they were able to get things back up and running on a manual basis. IT was contacted. He came in, myself, of course, Rod and Kyle and the leadership of environmental services were there. Made contact with K H and E. They in turn contacted the Division of Homeland Security. It's a CISA. They, they work, they work with cyber attacks and that type of thing. So he came out on site, kind of helped us work through the process of what we needed to do to make contacts. He in turn got in contact with FBI. The FBI and Homeland Security have been working with us since then, looking at the criminal piece of it and doing forensics on our, on our servers that were attacked. We have insurance for cyber, cyber attacks, so we contacted them Monday. So we've been working with a, a legal group that's called. Got here somewhere. I should have, oh yeah, Baker Hostetler. And then they in turn brought on SRM, which is a, they did investigation and forensics. So they're, they're on the backside of things, working in the same things that the FBI is too. So we've got all that going. The FBI is, still has our servers. They'll be returning those to us this week sometime. We'll get the forensic review. In the meantime, we've ordered new servers and, and then the software for that. So we have servers that will be twenty-six thousand five hundred. We have the, the software and upgrades for that to run the servers, to run the SCADA system. That's going to be seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. So those, those costs will have out for just to get. The, the legal and the investigation piece of it's another eighty-two thousand. That should be covered by insurance. We'll have a ten thousand dollar deductible on that. So, you know, we're really looking at probably the next thirty to sixty days to get fully back up and operation. In the meantime, we'll continue to work with the federal agencies and the insurance. They, the FBI has taken this pretty seriously because it is a critical infrastructure item, a water treatment plant. Which could affect the, you know, really the health and welfare of our citizens and it's, they take it pretty seriously. So I think they're, they're intent to try to catch the threat actors that did. they're, they're intent to try to catch the, the threat actors that did this. Whether they will or not, I don't know, but the, but they, they are actively working on it and they, they're taking it pretty seriously. Do you have anything to add on that?
Okay, pretty good coverage.
Um. Yes.
I wanna sign off the address, since they're looking for the threat agent, that they've kinda thought that he ran somewhere.
He ran somewhere?
Ran somewhere.
So.
On that note.
Yeah. So, the other thing too is our staff's been, been, our staff's been working pretty hard uh because, because of the uh SCADA system being, you know, disabled, not working properly. The um, they're having to be at this, at the uh plant uh twenty-four seven, there has to be someone out there watching things, keeping it running. And, and so we have a three man crew out there. Um, so Mike, Mike Frank, who just retired here a few months ago, was the, he was the supervisor of the plant, he's gonna come back and, and take a few shifts here and there to keep uh, give the guys a break. Um, we've reached out to um Kansas Maps, which is the, a mut- mutual aid program for Kansas utilities, uh, city utilities. Um, and we've got several cities that have um agreed to provide us some operators for some shifts here and there, so um, so we'll, we'll be able to give those guys some relief and, so they can get home and get some rest and, and uh.
See their family.
Their families a little bit, and so we, we've got those pieces in play. Um, so I think that pretty well covers all that for now. But it's been a, been a long week and a half, but um, we're starting to see the kind of light at the end of the tunnel and, and uh.
Lot of good interest. Uh, kind of the sandwich runs a green sand D O plant. They can send down two operators one day a week, different, different days. It takes care of a couple days. I actually just got a call before the meeting from, from a guy in Strong City. He runs a small green sand D O plant. He said he could help out on weekends. And uh, so that's, you know, pretty well, operators that could walk around and run our plant pretty well. Just very little, very little training there showing them what's going on. And uh, so anyway, I got a lot of good interest and also go to a company called Waterwide, Water, Water Rights, and uh, they actually do emergency staff in their D O plant. So they're working on a proposal, maybe bring in some more help. So, yeah, everything's, everything's liquored up, maybe get our guys some relief and keep everybody going till we get all straightened out.
Yeah. So we, we intend to make lemonade out of this. Um, obviously it could have been a lot worse, we were pretty fortunate. Um, the plant operations weren't fully shut off. Um, and, and I think we all, we all thought we were in really good shape security wise there at that, at the water treatment plant. That was probably what we felt was our best, most secure site in the community. So, um, but again, with, working with the, the C I S A um representative, um, they're, they're working on, um, we're, we're really gonna come out of this with a really strong, I think, security plan, um, moving forward for our entire city organization with our uh, with our computer systems. And so we'll, we'll be a lot stronger when this is over. It'll, it will be a good, we'll make it a good, a good thing.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanna say, Rod, would you please extend to all of the employees that are sta- stepping up and working extra hard, that this is, they are not going unnoticed. We really appreciate what they're doing, and the citizens do more than they probably realize.
Yeah.
Thank you, and I'll be very proud to see all that information.
Thank you.
So then the next thing, we'll stay on water here and others. So, um, you know, tonight, uh, with the approval of the East Pressure Zone, um, and then uh, with the um, the water um rate analysis that you guys approved back in August, um, we're really kicking off a water master plan. So, in the water, on the water bills this month, we sent out a letter to the citizens letting them know kind of what we're doing, what, what plans we have, and, and just kind of a high overview of, of kind of kicking off this water master plan. Um, Shannon's working on social media posts and, and also news release for the paper. So, we're gonna start, we're trying to educate the citizens on, on what we're gonna be doing here and how we're, we're really gonna focus and work hard on improving our water distribution, which we all know has been, you know, needed for a long time. Um, so, just kind of wanted to keep you on that. Uh, Rod, you were wanting to mention the, the well rehab. You had some numbers you're gonna be bringing to them on the well rehabs, uh.
All right, yeah. Yeah, okay. Oh, about that. Uh, of course, we're, we're still working on offset number four, but we gotta keep that offset program going. Looking for another well field too. That's the only way we're gonna keep up the creeps down. But we had two wells start pumping down, uh, number twelve and number nine. So, I went ahead since we're, it's pretty critical to keep all the wells going. Uh, holding lane, and they'll be rehabbing both wells for, I think both of them together were fifty-five thousand nine hundred. So.
What are you gonna do, ask jobs on them, or?
Yeah, ask them to, yeah.
Yeah.
Plan, get the cleans up, screens all, all clean and then, then uh, but I also will ask you all to please pray for rain. Thank you.
Good right now.
Okay, we'll, we'll quit talking about water now. So, uh, the city applied for a V J Wilkins grant uh for the Wilson Park, uh, the playground and splash pad uh project. Um, and that would be to go along with the C B D G grant that we were applying for as well. So, we were awarded a fifty thousand dollar uh grant from V J Wilkins contingent upon us getting the C B D G grant. So, um, wanna keep you informed on that. Um, Mayor Warren and Commissioner Tweedy and I went to Regional Issues Forum in Wichita uh last week, and it was pretty good. I put some information in your packet this last show that we saw there and since, um, and then some of the information, updated information on the regional economy that, that they shared. But really the three takeaways um for the regional issues, and they really mirror what we're looking at, you know, of course, jobs and business growth, transportation and infrastructure, and then mental health and housing was, was the other items. And through one of those issues, we're, we're facing here, just like all the other cities are. Um, mental health was a, it, and we, and I know this is really affecting the P D. Um, the mental health issues that are going on in the area, um, is really racking up the hours and, and putting a lot of stress on our, on all of our departments in the area. Um, there's no beds to take when the, when these folks are having a mental issue, uh, mental problems and the law enforcement become involved, and they're forced to stay and babysit uh folks that are safe, that are in a hospital, no mental health beds to get into. And um, I don't know, last week you had two officers tied up for what, three days or?
Had ninety-six hours, man hours sitting in the hospital waiting, waiting with the patient, waiting on bed, bed of state facility. So that was basically ninety-six hours of overtime.
So, and, and again, that was something we heard several, from several different communities in this regional issues forum. So it's not just us, but it is a pretty taxing thing on our, our police department. And of course, housing, affordable housing, that was a big uh, um, discussion. And it seems to me that the, our master, from what I was hearing, uh, the other communities that were facing the same issues with housing affordability, um, some that are kind of moving forward with some solutions. Um, I think our master plan that um, that you guys saw here a few weeks ago was, it kind of spot on with some of the things that the other communities are looking at doing in the, in this, this southern central region. So, um, infrastructure, of course, the water, we're, we're all facing water issues and stuff. So, um, and we're all looking at the same issues. I think we're uh, I think we're in a good place on moving forward with some of these things. I think we're doing the right things, and so we'll see how that plays out in the future. But um, just wanted to kind of update you on that. Um, and then I updated the community price index uh for inflation. Um, the latest, uh, August was the latest um number I could get. Um, and just as a comparison, so that chart that you see, the bottom chart, it starts in January, January of twenty twenty-one, and what a hundred dollars would have bought in January of twenty, uh, twenty-one, uh, now costs a hundred and twenty-one dollars. And the uh, January of twenty-four, so starting, it's just the past year in January, it was a hundred and seventeen dollars, um, is, is now the equivalent of a hundred and twenty-one. So just so you know how to read that chart, but that's kind of where we're at inflation. And then the last thing, Humane Society, um, they've been have, struggling financially and with uh animal uh populations, and it's really been causing issues with um our city and how our um animal control folks can handle it and what they can do with the animals. So, um, we've been working with, with uh, the, of course, City Windfield, um, Ark City and Humane Society are partners in that facility out there. Been trying to work through the solutions. The financial issues, um, they're gonna be about, from now to the end of the year, they're gonna be about sixty thousand dollars short from what we can forecast and where they're at now. Um, so the City Windfield, um, City Ark City, um, would like to, uh, well, we don't want to, but we need to, we need to provide another twenty thousand, and then the Humane Society's gonna need to come up with the other twenty thousand. So, uh, next, uh, I'll bring some more information for you guys at the next meeting, but uh, just wanted to get that on your radar, so you're not blindsided by that as we're coming. But um, that, again, that's just one piece of it. Then there's the whole sustainability of this moving forward. Uh, the population out there, they're full, they um, uh, they're to the point where they can't take our animals a lot of times, they just don't have space. Um, so there's a whole, you know, responsible pet ownership thing going on and, and to reduce the population out there, um, to make room and to get the cost down, um, pet bills and all those types of things. So, just so you know that there's, the issues are ongoing and we're trying to find solutions and, but, and that's all I've got.
Okay.
I do have one thing. So we did talk about this. Um, the work session for October eleventh, a lot of us are gonna be at the league for this, this conference. And so it's been suggested that we move that to the Monday, October fourteenth. And we're having a special meeting that Monday, the public hearing on the K P G, right? So, um, we'll be sending out my email for them.
What, you wanna make it uh like at four o'clock, or?
Um, the, the.
Public.
At noon, so I suggest that we.
Okay, okay. I have it all at noon. Okay.
We'll write into work session.
Okay, we have all at noon then?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. And then I don't, did you have any, uh, the project update uh sheets in front of there, Nick, do you have anything on that you wanna specifically point out, or?
Uh, levy certification is going from phase one, rolling into phase two, so I'll present that here shortly. There's five phases. We're gonna apply for a grant uh to have one of the phases paid for, uh, to help alleviate some of the financial stress there. But um, I can bike trail, we're good. Probably say it every week.
A little bit you're going down on there, right?
They're still preparing all the documents, well, we will, yes.
Okay, that's four years overweighted.
Uh, you guys saw the, uh, on Friday, the uh street assessment. Uh, the goal is the next thirty to sixty days, that street assessment will be finalized, and then we can start presenting some options and over what that master plan.
Alrighty, uh, is any discussion by the city commissioners on any of that?
I just wanted, I did go by and see um Phil Hart, uh, Eric, they had. Phil, Phil.
Ken.
Ken, yeah. I went by, saw Ken, I gave him the, the, oh, I'm gonna agree. Uh, he's gonna go over that, I fear that he might be here tonight, but um, anyway, he's going over that, so I'll touch base back with him. He seemed to be very, very fond of it, he liked it.
Any comments from the audience that's on the agenda, what's up?
Mentioned that tonight's our block party for National Night Out, uh, Commissioner Tweedy asked about the t-shirts for the commissioner, the city manager, so I brought one, six.
Oh, wow.
I don't know if the sizes, I think they're all large or extra large or something. So I have them, uh, commissioners. And I think we have eleven parties tonight. Uh, we had two counts canceled last minute, and I have officers out at all the parties right now, and I'm going to head that way.
I want to thank the.
Yeah, it was a great time last night.
Yeah, I want to thank the, the party last night for what.
Have a good time out, and we appreciate all the hamburgers on the grill, and those were good.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah, thanks, chief.
Board of Coles, nineteen twenty-five North Eight. You have eighty-five shopping days until Christmas. And tonight, forty-five days, you'll be hearing the talking heads talk about the presidential election. Tonight, hold a hall and watch the recording on C-SPAN about the vice presidential debate. Some of you received this item in the mail, and some of you did not read it, or at least some of your constituents did. In my opinion, that is the most important item on the election ballot, because it impacts everyone in this room that lives in our city and pays taxes that you know, when you all got elected to this board, how many of the voters voted for you? I know you know how many voted for you, but how many voters in Ark City did not even come to the polls to vote, not for you even? That's an embarrassment, ladies and gentlemen, embarrassment upon this city. And I took an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oklahoma and the state of Kansas, to defend the Constitution against enemies both foreign and domestic, and to have a voter register to vote and waste taxpayer dollar and that little bit of time alone is unconscionable. The voters need to get out and vote, because the most important issue on the ballot is not the president and vice presidential debate. The most important vote is the Arkansas City Public Library Board of Trustees passed a resolution to call for an election to create a new library council. If you've got this and didn't read it, go to the land bill and dig it out. If you got this and didn't read it, go to the post office, go to the newspaper and read the article in this, that newspaper. Now, get out and encourage your constituents to do their constitutionally guaranteed right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're spot on. Anybody else?
I got a bit of a sick bed today. I'm running fever right now, but this is important and it's serious. I'm gonna read a statement to the commission. It has questions in it, but they're mainly rhetorical. It's a statement to the City of Arkansas City Commission, Arkansas City, Kansas, October third, twenty twenty-four. I would like to know if the Arkansas City Commission or Chad Beeson has anything to say to me about Chad Beeson putting his hands on me at the last nine twenty-seven, twenty-four open commission or session by patting me on my bare upper leg while I was sitting quietly in a chair. In the last two months of me attending open commission meetings to learn and speak my opinions, Chad has gone from verbally bullying and intimidating language to me, to now putting his hands on my body in an uninvited and inappropriate manner in front of commissioners, city mayor, city manager, police chief, city county attorney, and other city employees. Does this Arkansas City Commission have no code or canon of ethics? If you, as the top body of the city's government, cannot control or by your silence allow such inappropriate behavior from your members who are obviously trying to discourage citizens from attending and participating in open meetings, then I will have no other alternative than to contact a higher authority outside of this county. Signed, Vicky Jackson, Arkansas City Citizen.
Steve?
I've got something to say, I'm Steve Young, eighteen North Tenth, Arkansas City. Not Commissioner Spielman, because I don't really know you, I knew David a bit, but each of these commissioners have encouraged me to come to the meetings. When I see you out on the streets, at the office, you encourage me to come to the meetings and say what's on my mind. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else have anything?
I do.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Robert Jordan, I live in Parkerville, I have a business here in Ark City. I just would like to thank you guys for what you do for this community. You guys are just making things happen, getting things done in this community that's needed to be done for a long time. And I appreciate y'all showing up to the events that we do put on downtown and working with us. And I've, I've been around you a lot and, you know, I've never seen you be inappropriate with anyone. So I'm sorry that you're getting that allegation against you because.
It's not an allegation.
No, anyway, but thank you guys so much for all you've done for, for Arkansas City. Thank you.
Okay, if, if anybody else, not, it's, I hear a motion for adjournment, so move.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.